How my day is going.
Boris, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
So it's 7:30 and I think that will open the meeting. I know select board member Amy Shapiro is going to be a little bit late. She had to attend a wake for a family friend. So hopefully if time permits, she'll be jumping on later. So we'll open the August 24th, 2020, meeting of the Winchester Select Board. My name is Michael Betancourt. I serve as Chair. This evening, joining me is Select Board Member Mariano Gullaboff, Select Board Member Jacqueline Welch, and Select Board Member Susan Verdicchio, who serves as Chair. Also, I see Town Council Mina Marcarius and Jillian Barker, as well as our Town Manager Lisa Wong. So just a couple of quick updates before we get into our agenda. The next Select Board meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 14th, 2020, in regular session. And whether we continue in a remote format or not, we'll certainly be advising the town on and discussing in the future. But for the time being, and we are going to be remote and will certainly be remote, I think, for the September 14th meeting as well. So just another update. The early voting is going on right now. It started this past Saturday and is going every day this week at Town Hall, which is beginning at 8:00 AM and continues until 4:00 PM through this Friday. And the Friday hours are 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Is that right, Lisa? Is that where we are? Okay. And just another couple of announcements. Early this summer, during one of our televised Zoom meetings, the meeting was Zoom bombed and was taken over by individuals outside our community, we now know. And it wasn't only disruptive and deeply disturbing. It was hate speech and involved nudity and sexual acts. And our police investigated and through a deep forensic investigation, we've identified a 16-year-old boy in Smyrna, Tennessee, who has admitted to participating in the crime. He acknowledged that it was part of an online blog called Discord, and they conduct these activities regularly. And he admitted to participating in the disruption of 70, over 70 meetings targeted by Discord. So we will keep residents aware of any developments in this case and change our practices and evaluate our protocols for remote participation. But I did want to extend our appreciation to the Winchester Police Department for their excellent work in this ongoing investigation. It's never easy when you're working with outside departments and conducting forensic investigations. So well done. We appreciate at least some information on that really horrific event. I also wanted to extend my sincerest appreciation and on behalf of the Select Board as well, to Betsy Craigor and acknowledge her retirement from the Planning Board after many years of service. The town of Winchester would not be where it is today without Betsy's leadership and commitment to the town. The Select Board, Finance Committee, and Planning Board amongst many others, including the Street Committee, which she always reminds me. We will have an opportunity in coming months to thank Betsy more formally. And I have a feeling she will stay involved, though not at the very high level the Planning Board demands right now. So again, thank you, Betsy. We'll post the vacancy for this position starting tomorrow, I think, is when it will go out. And that will be an appointment for the remainder of Betsy's term until March. And it'll be a joint appointment by the Select Board and the Planning Board. And lastly, for me, just a quick poem that I'm going to read. I know we've all been under a lot of pressure lately at the town level. It feels like we've been kind of going at things for the past several months. And so it's a good reminder to kind of keep our eye on the ball. And we really have been working so well and relying on the School Committee, the Planning Board, and various other committees. Certainly, the Health Department and our staff through the Town Manager's Office and all the way down the line. So a quick one. This one's "Once the World Was Perfect" by Joy Harjo. She's the incumbent United States poet laureate from Tulsa, Oklahoma. Goes like this. "Once the world was perfect and we were happy in that world, then we took it for granted. This content began a small rumble in the earthly mind. Then doubt pushed through with its spiked head. And once doubt ruptured the web, all manner of demon thoughts jumped through. We destroyed the world we had been given for inspiration, for life. Each stone of jealousy, each stone of fear, greed, envy, and hatred put out the light. No one was without a stone in his or her hand. There we were, right back where we had started. We were bumping into each other in the dark. And now we had no place to live, since we didn't know how to live with each other. Then one of the stumbling ones took pity on another and shared a blanket. A spark of kindness made a light. The light made an opening in the darkness. Everyone worked together to make a ladder. A Wind Clan person climbed out first into the next world and then the other clans, the children of those clans, their children, and their children, all the way through time to now, into this morning light to you." So thank you for indulging. I'm set with my comments. If there are other comments from the Board, happy to acknowledge them at this point.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Go ahead, Jackie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I just want to echo your comments regarding Ms. Craigor. In addition to all the years she served the town on the Planning Board, she also served on the Select Board back when it was called the Board of Selectmen. And she was, I believe, either the second or third woman to serve on this Board. So I just wish her well on her retirement. And the town owes her a debt of gratitude for all the years and countless of hours that she put forward volunteering in different positions, including this Board, the Planning Board, Town Meeting. And just, you know, she laid the path for so many others that have followed behind her. And just, you know, again, thank you to Betsy Craigor.
Mariano, Jackie.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. I won't duplicate what has already been so eloquently said by my colleagues, Mr. Betancourt and Mr. Gullaboff, about a couple of things, but particularly about Betsy Craigor. I would also note that she is a long, was a longtime Chair of the Planning Board. So, and those duties obviously were, you know, pretty challenging and involved a lot of extra time, in addition to all the other roles that have already been pointed out. So thank you so much, Betsy, and well-deserved retirement. And thank you again for all you've done for the town. Also, I wanted to echo our Chair's comments about kudos to our Police Department for all the hard work. I'm sure that was no easy task, and they were clearly very tenacious and deliberate in that investigation. And it's very impressive work. And then finally, just another note about Planning Board. I believe you said, Mr. Chair, I apologize if I didn't hear correctly, but I think you said the position will be posted to the Planning Board, and then we'll have a joint meeting in the future for the appointment? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, I think it actually, the runway on it is a little bit long as far as, I think it maybe is 28 days that we have to wait before we make an appointment, but I'm not sure. But it's, it will be posted, I believe, starting tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, and I'm sure the Board's looking forward to, well, the Ms. Craigor, obviously, but still looking forward to, after the posting period, making sure that we can have that meeting so they can kind of go forward with whoever the appointment is. So thank you so much again.
Thank you, Jackie.
So this is Susan. I just wanted to add about Betsy Craigor, that she was always very generous with her time and willing to talk to people who, you know, were thinking about getting involved or running for office. And she really helped me a lot and answered a lot of questions and has been a resource to people in this town for many a year. A very knowledgeable and helpful person. And I believe she was on the Board at the time and one of the members of the group that came up with the idea of our building and capital stabilization funds. And very innovative at the time and par-sighted and somebody that has really stood the town in very good stead for, you know, thereafter and continues to be an important strength of this town. And I just, I didn't want that to be forgotten. When we do finally have a more formal acknowledgement of Betsy's service, I'm sure there's a long list of things that we could list. So I'm very grateful to her, and the town is much better for her service. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. And joining us now too is Select Board Member Amy Shapiro. Amy, we just got started a few minutes ago, but we assigned you seven new committees to join. That's what happens. But we were just starting off with a few Board comments. And I acknowledged the retirement of Betsy Craigor from the Planning Board. So a few people were making comments, and just general comments are welcome. I apologize for putting you on the spot right when you walk in the door, but feel free to share anything, but you don't have to.
Yeah, no, I heard the end of Susan's. I think I definitely echo for what I heard of, what I've heard of Betsy's service. It's been really tremendous over a long period of time. And I had the pleasure of driving with Betsy to the Democratic Convention, State Convention last year, two years ago, whenever that was. And I heard a lot about her and her history in the town, and it's pretty remarkable. So I just want to also extend my thanks and best wishes to her.
Thanks, Amy. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Item B, Under Acceptance of Donations. I'll take a motion to accept the donation to the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community.
So I move that we accept with gratitude donations in the amount of $20,000, which is in disbursement of a grant awarded to the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community.
Second.
All in favor, take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Again, a really amazing donation, and we really appreciate that, especially to the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community, which does phenomenal work. Moving on to Item C. Lisa, do we need any work on the appointments here?
Yeah, so we'll just go through two appointments. And I did send you two-pager updates, so I can certainly go over that now or later. But we'll do the appointments first. So the first is for DPW Maintenance Working Foreman. So in accordance with Section 4-2V of the Town Charter, I've made the following promotional full-time appointment in the DPW Maintenance Department to Anthony Dolan Winchester to a W-13 Working Foreman position. And I'm respectfully requesting that you waive the usual 15-day appointment period.
So I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period on the appointment of Anthony Dolan to the position of Working Foreman.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. All in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Great. This next two appointments, I know Pete Lawson will totally appreciate. This is in accordance with Section 4-2V of the Town Charter. I've made the following regular full-time appointments in the DPW School Custodial Staff Division to Francisco Arevalo from Revere to an SC-7 School Custodian Position and Richard Barry of Wilburn to an SC-7 School Custodian Position, also requesting that the Board vote to waive the usual 15-day appointment period.
So I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period on the appointments of Francisco Arevalo and Richard Barry to the position of Custodian.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy, oh, sorry, you jumped around my screen. I lost you there. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. I don't know, Lisa, we've got some folks waiting. If you want to give a brief update, I know you had kind of longer updates. It's up to you whether you want to do it now or wait a little bit.
Yep, so we'll certainly post these updates. Let me just give you like super really quick things.
It doesn't have to be quick. I didn't want to rush you.
Well, I'll go through the important highlights and certainly later on.
Thank you.
Questions you have. But I don't think we formally announced that the Police Chief is going to be retiring at the end of the calendar year. So his leadership will be sorely missed. So the town has initiated the civil service process to select the next chief, and I have assembled an advisory committee to help with key decisions, such as putting together the Assessment Center. Also, the town is in the process of finalizing its first FEMA reimbursement request for COVID-19 expenses. We've totaled up until June 30th, so basically last fiscal year, that we spent about $284,000 in eligible FEMA expenses. There are things that are not eligible for FEMA that we're going to go after for CARES funding. So the 284, if whatever FEMA does ultimately approve, they'll give us 75% of that. And the other 25%, we're going to request to the CARES Act. And there'll also be additional things that we'll request to the CARES Act that FEMA does not recover. So we're finishing that. And then we're also starting on tracking the next period of expenses between July 1st and September 1st to go through another round of requesting reimbursement. And this is very timely, because there are certainly additional expenses this year, especially in the School Department, that we're going to need funding for. Speaking of which, the state did announce that they're going to be level funding state aid. That includes Chapter 70. That's fairly good news for us, because we had budgeted a decrease. So we are getting extra funding through the budget that way. The library is going to be opening for, the library has opened for appointments for computer use. So people can go online or show up Monday through Thursday at predetermined time slots and request appointments to use the computer. And then, so you had mentioned early voting. That's really important. We want to get folks out this week if they feel comfortable coming in. And then again, a whole bunch of, whole bunch of project updates. But you can certainly let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Lisa. And the Select Board has been meeting the past couple of Fridays on our work plan. And one of the things that we've identified is the need to have more access to updates on a regular basis to our projects, because I know a lot of people have noticed that the town is under quite a bit of construction and will be in the coming months. So it's hard to know where closures are. You know, this summer's been a little bit crazy, but in a good way. We're starting to finish some of these projects, like the Waterfield Bridge, and just as we're starting others. So we'll be talking about that. I also, did you have anything else, Lisa? I didn't want to cut you off.
No, that was it. I could maybe just mentioning that just before this meeting, we had a meeting with the neighbors that, about the MBTA Downtown commuter rail station. So we, the town had sort of drawn a circle around the project and sent a letter of a notice for a meeting. And then we posted it to attend. So we did have some residents and got some initial feedback on the MBTA work hours and some other considerations for the Board to talk about.
Great, thanks, Lisa. And before we go on to the next agenda item, I also just wanted to acknowledge the passing of this past week of Tommy Connolly, a longtime member of our Water Department, the Department of Public Works here. And there was a service yesterday for him. And it's really a big loss for a longtime employee. And I know that that department is really hurting from that, which seems fairly sudden. So Tom Connolly will certainly be missed. And we extend our well wishes to his family. And next, we'll move on to Item D in our agenda, Matters from the Audience. If there are, or any matters from audience members that are otherwise not listed on our agenda, happy to hear those now. Hearing none, we'll move on. We do not have a controls report, any licenses, or hearings tonight. So we'll move directly down to Section H of our agenda, our, I think, our first business item. Lisa, does that make sense to start there?
Sounds good.
So we need to vote on the acceptance of the Grant Easement Orders for taking, for temporary and permanent easements for the Safe Roots to School project over by the Vincent Owen School. We've been kind of waiting for this project for a long time. And so it's nice to see that we're moving forward. The town had installed temporary lights there, but it's nice to see that the full project and expanding the intersection with new lane, turning lanes and signalizing it fully is going to be underway. I don't know if Beth, if you had anything to add there?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep, we can.
Great. So I did have a really brief presentation I thought I would run through. I think Patty or Lisa are able to share on the screen. That would be great. Thank you. So just briefly, as Mike mentioned, this project has been a long time coming. So back in 2013, members of the, I mean, you could go back, back a slide there, Patty. Thank you for just one more. To the project timeline. So back in June of 2013, members of the Vincent Owen community applied for what's called a Safe Roots to School grant through MassDOT. And then over the next few years, in 2016 and 2017, MassDOT completed their assessment report and then formally accepted the recommendations as an official project. So unlike other projects, this is not a grant from the state. This is a project that's actually designed and constructed through MassDOT with input from the town. The MassDOT held there was called 25% Design Hearing at the Vincent Owen School last September. And we've moved through the 75% design process with them this year. And now we're at the point where we are, we, the town is required to what's called secure the right of way. So we are at the point where we are in the process of, we completed our appraisals and we are in the process of doing the temporary and permanent easement takings, which we're here to talk about tonight. MassDOT expects to bid the project this fall, and then hopefully we'll have a spring 2021 construction start. Next slide, please. So overall, the proposed, excuse me, proposed improvements are to install a permit traffic signal at the intersection of Johnson Road and Ridge Street with a left turn lane from Johnson Road onto Ridge Street, a new sidewalks and ADA compliant ramps on Johnson Road and the west side of Ridge Street, installation of a new crosswalk and a rapid flashing beacon at Coolidge. And then they're widening the road a little bit to allow for a usable shoulder by bicycle. Next slide, please. So this is just a plan. I know there's a lot going on here, but the general concept is that at the intersection of Ridge Street and Johnson Road, we'll continue to have crosswalks at all road intersections. And then we'll also add a left turn lane from Johnson Road onto Ridge Street. And then they'll be widening it slightly to allow for that, that turn lane. Next slide. This is the area in front of the Vincent Owen School, which actually has very little changes, just some changes to the curb line and sidewalk adjustments to allow for that slight widening of the lanes on Johnson Road. Next slide. So you can see on this slide, this is Ridge Street with Coolidge Road and Arisha Lane coming in. There'll be a new crosswalk added at Arisha Lane, and then a new crosswalk plus a rapid flashing beacon added at Coolidge Road. The sidewalk on the west side of Ridge Street, the Lexington side, will be reconstructed. There's, there's really not the ability, we looked at this pretty closely, the ability to add a cross, to me, add a sidewalk on the opposite side of Ridge Street just because of the slopes in that area and the need to install walls and other, and remove trees and that type of thing. So we, we ended up adding what we hope are safer crossings across Ridge Street for kids to walk down the other side of the street. Next slide, please. So this project requires the taking of 15 temporary easements on private property, two temporary easements on the Vincent Owen School property, and one permanent easement on the Vio School property. The temporary easements are generally required for grading, driveway reconstruction, tree trimming, and possibly wall repairs if there's any impact. Basically, just for the contractor to be able to go out there and, and do the sidewalk, remove the existing sidewalk, put in the new sidewalk, move the curb line. And that requires them to kind of step onto the abutting residential property. The school committee voted to approve the certificate of donation and the grant of easement at their meeting last Tuesday for the three easements on the school property. Next slide. So this is a list of all of the addresses, the easement areas, and the compensation that will be given to those property owners. This compensation was determined through the appraisal process. We followed the MassDOT guidelines, which requires both an original appraisal and a review appraisal. I don't want to go into any detail on this, but if there's any specific questions, we can come back to it. Next slide. So the action for the Board this evening is, one, to vote to approve the order of takings for the temporary and permanent easements. Number two, to vote to endorse the grant of easement for the Vio School property, which was already approved and signed by the School Committee last week. And then we're on a pretty tight timeline here in order to meet the MassDOT bid schedule. So if it's possible to have three members of the Board come into the office, into the Town Manager's Office tomorrow to sign the documents, they also need to be notarized. And Jen Cafrell is able to do that. Then I can give those documents to Inerson Craigor to get recorded this week. And if we're able to do that, then we are able to issue the checks on Friday to the property owners for that just compensation. Next slide. Okay, that, this, there's just a few plans here in case there's specific questions about the easement, but that, that's really all I had on that topic for now. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Beth. Any questions from the Board or anyone else?
What's the timeline on this project?
So the project will be bid this fall, and it's MassDOT that bids it, and select the contractor, it's not the town of Winchester. So they have a little bit of a longer selection process than we do. Their hope is to start construction next spring. I would hope that they would be able to do a lot of the construction in the spring, over the summer, and maybe into the fall. But they always kind of leave a larger timeline than, than I would think is necessary. So they think it could take up to a year, but I'm hopeful that they'll be able to complete it quicker than that.
And will there be any roads shut down because of this during the process?
So I would think they'd probably be able to do all the work with at least one lane of traffic. We did just receive during the middle of last week the draft traffic management plans, which were sent to myself and the Police Chief. So I'll review that with them. But I think overall, they should be able to move traffic through with at least one lane open. And obviously, during morning drop-off and pickup, they'll be, we'll try, we'll do our best to minimize any disruptions during that time.
Right. Thanks.
Can you guys hear me? This is Jackie.
We can.
Okay, first of all, thank you, Amy. Those questions were really good questions. But Town Engineer, thank you so much for that presentation, very detailed. And it already seems like the temporary light has been well-received, aside from, you know, I'm sure, ongoing kind of feedback that you've gotten from neighbors and, you know, other constructive inputs. I just wanted to take a moment without putting them on the spot, but to thank our Chair, because I believe, if my memory serves, Mr. Betancourt was very involved in the sort of, some of the early stages of this. And obviously, it's very important, not only to parents, but to schoolchildren and therefore our entire community. So thank you very much to everyone involved. But I just wanted to give some specific praise to our Chair, our Board. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
I concur. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, and thank you to Beth and everyone that's been working on this, and especially Myrna Chan McCray, who actually had started this grant way back when, before I got involved at all. And when everybody's looking to get things done quickly, this is the kind of perfect example of the timeline of how kind of government moves. You know, it's, we were all joking. You know, it's, we were all joking when this started that, you know, did we think that this was going to get done before all our kids left Vincent Owen or not, and now officially, we're, all of our kids have moved on. So it does take a while, and the construction phase seems like it's going to take a while, too, but it's necessary and certainly that helped us. And we start to look at other school construction projects as we start adding enrollment to the schools, that we also need to evaluate the traffic because we're sending more vehicles in that area. But also, that was just a tough intersection and very high volume and has been for quite some time. So thanks, Beth, and thanks, everyone. I don't know if there are other comments or if we wanted to move on with the approvals.
I just had a quick question on the motion or motions. Beth and Mina or whoever, do we need a separate motion regarding the school easement? So I have to say that, you know, do we need to endorse? Is that the verb, endorse the grant of easement for the VO property? Or is that part of the whole omnibus motion that we already have on the agenda?
Sure, this is Jillian. Hi, that is part of the permanent easement vote that we have prepared for tonight, the acceptance of the permanent easement.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So I move that we approve the grants of easement and orders of taking for temporary and permanent easements regarding the Safe Roots to School infrastructure project for 137, 140, 142, 146, 149, 150, 154, 157, 164 and 170 Ridge Street, two Vincent Circle, 75, 76 and 78 Johnson Road, and one Arisha Lane, as contained in the meeting packet.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote, all in favor. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Did we, did we need anything else on that one in particular, Beth?
I would defer to Jillian and Mina to make sure that there's, see if there's anything else that needed to be done.
Is it just one motion or is it two separate motions?
Yeah, I thought they were, maybe Jillian, you're on mute. I just want to make sure that that's all they need to vote there.
Yep, I think there were two motions, one related to the temporary and one related to the permanent.
Do you guys have both of them in your packet?
Jillian, you had given it to me as, as combined. That's what was on the agenda that you had given me. Was that for both of them?
Yep, on the agenda, it's combined into one, but we had drafted a vote identifying, yep, there we go. That's it in front of you there. Do you guys see the?
Yep.
Two votes I just shared, okay.
I think the board needs to vote both, the language for both of those items.
Okay.
Jillian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if it's a motion, if you don't have the language of a motion in front of you, a motion to take action, I would do two separate votes, but you already did one in the form provided to the board and shown on the screen, shared by Ms. Wong, the town manager, would be appropriate, and I don't think you need to reread the whole thing.
I believe so as well, yeah.
But Mr. Chairman, I can read it really quickly. I mean, this is a, this is taking of easements. So just to make sure, I move that to acquire temporary easements in, on, over, across, under and long temporary easement areas by eminent domain pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 79, for municipal purposes and to award the damages to the persons in the demands shown in the order of taking for the temporary easement areas presented at the select boards August 24, 2020 meeting and to authorize the town manager to take any and all actions on behalf of the town that are reasonable, necessary in the judgment of the town manager to complete such taking and acquisition, including without limitation regarding the order of taking, provided notice of such order of taking, accepting and executing a certificate of donation, offering settlement and paying damages all as required by Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 79.
Second.
All in favor.
With appreciation for the quick read. You should be town moderator.
So I'll take a roll call vote, all in favor. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I move that to acquire permanent easement on, in, on, over, across, under and all along a permanent easement area by eminent domain pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 79, for municipal purposes and to award the damages shown in the order of taking for the permanent easement area presented at the select boards August 24, 2020 meeting and to authorize the town manager to take any and all actions on behalf of the town that are reasonable, necessary in the judgment of the town manager to complete such taking and acquisition, including without limitation regarding the order of taking, providing notice of such order of taking, accepting and executing a certificate of donation, offering settlement and paying damages all as required by Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 79.
Second.
All in favor. I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mina, Jillian, are we set with that?
Yes, I think that's everything we need.
Okay.
And Jillian, that incorporates the grant of easement from the school committee as well?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, great. So not to belabor the logistics, but I just want to make sure that there's three board members that are available tomorrow to come into the town manager's office before 2:00 PM so that you can sign and Jen Cafrell can notarize the document.
I can swing by.
I can do that.
Great.
I can, too.
Excellent, thank you, guys. So I will, I'll work with Jen in the morning to get the documents printed out so they're available for you to sign in the town manager's office.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So I think that we're set on that business item. We'll move to number two, which is the ornamental mast upgrade at the intersection of Johnson and Ridge.
Right.
Beth, I didn't know if you could just give us the quick and dirty on that one?
Sure. Yep, yeah, so Patty, if you're able to pull up that presentation that you had up, if you click through a few slides, I added some additional information on this as well. But just a little background while she's getting that presentation up. So Mass DOT has what's called their standard mast arm. Yeah, if you click through the slide, keep going, maybe three or four forward. Other direction, sorry. Keep going. Great, we can go one more and I'll start there. Excellent, thank you. So Mass DOT has what they call their standard mast arm, which is shown here in a picture provided by Mass DOT. Not a particularly great photo, I apologize. They are usually just aluminum or galvanized metal. In this instance, they can be painted black as well. So this is kind of what we would get if we don't do anything on this project. This is what Mass DOT basically provides for free. And if you click the next slide forward, this is a photo outside of Winchester High School of what the town of Winchester has typically used as our decorative mast arm. So we have to make the decision as to whether or not the town wants to just go with the Mass DOT standard mast arm or we want to pay for the upgrade to the decorative mast arm. So on this slide, that's okay, you can go forward, that's fine. So as I said, there's no additional cost for the standard Mass DOT mast arm, which would be painted black. Mass DOT has indicated that the cost to upgrade to the decorative mast arm to be bought by the town would be approximately $85,000 at a minimum. That's their engineer's estimate for how much they expect the decorative mast arm to cost more than the standard mast arm. And that would be at all corners of that intersection, the Johnson and Ridge intersection. In addition, they've estimated that the overall cost of the traffic signals in their bid item is about $356,000. So this is just the engineer's estimate. If the bid exceeds that $356,000, $356,710 to be exact, the town would then be required to pay, anything that's above that $365,000, we would be required to pay 23.8% of that. So that would be in addition to the $85,000. So we've done this on other projects. We did this years ago when Mass DOT upgraded Washington Street. We did this more recently, which a few board members may remember, when Mass DOT did the intersection of Church Bacon and Fletcher Street and also when Mass DOT did the intersection along Cambridge Street. There were three locations. So we have to make a decision for this project whether the town wants to move forward with that upgrade to the decorative mast arm here or we want to just go with a standard mast arm. Typically, we've used in the past, Chapter 90 funding to pay for that. I believe there is sufficient funding just by the hair, you know, not anything more in that Chapter 90 account. So it would kind of take us to basically expend what we have available for this current fiscal year if we make this decision. So with that, I'll open it to the board for any questions or comments.
Can I ask you a quick question, Ms. Rudolph?
Sure.
That extra, I think you said 23 or 28%, would that be regardless of whether or not we did the decorative mast arms?
No, that's only if we pay for the decorative mast arm. So it's a minimum of $85,000. And then if that, when they bid the project, if that traffic signal line item comes in over what their engineer's estimate is, we have to pay some money in addition to that $85,000, which is 23.8% of that, anything over that.
But it somehow directly tied because of the decorative mast arms?
Right, so I think $85,000 is 23.8% of that $356,000. That's probably where they got that percentage. If that all makes sense, I know it's kind of complicated. So I think that's how they got that percentage, right? That we would pay anything above that.
Okay, well, I would just say, obviously, I want to make sure everyone on the board has plenty of time to indicate their observations on this. But to me, thank you for indicating that it looks like we have the funds, even though it's pretty close. And I know that particularly this time period, we're being very mindful of our challenging budget issues. So I'm extremely sensitive to all of that. I guess I sort of feel that it's, I don't know what the right word is, but just for consistency and balance throughout the rest of the town, it seems like it'd be a little unfair if this area didn't get the decorative mast that other areas in town have consistently gotten, whether or not they were DOT or other funded projects. So I do think it would look really nice, but I'm certainly sensitive to the financial aspect. But I guess if it were up to me, since it looks like we could afford it, although just barely, I'm just very respectful about the neighbors and the neighborhood and just to have consistency in town. And I would be in favor of the decorative mast arms. But I appreciate the sensitive financial issues. Thank you.
So I kind of feel different than Jackie. I think that, you know, given the financial times that we're in, knowing that we have a lot of other projects coming up, and I think that because people are so used to that temporary light, which doesn't have any of the decorative masks, I don't think that this is the time to put that much money into something decorative. That's my personal opinion. I don't know, I mean, I don't know that I would notice the difference until I saw the pictures. I certainly want to be cognizant of the fact that the neighbors have to stare at these things all the time. But I think that they've, like Mike said, it's been a while since we've had that temporary light up there. And I think that that's, people have gotten used to that. And I think that that would be, I think the normal mast arms would be sufficient.
Yeah, I would ask if there's any other pressing needs that we would be using that Chapter 90 money for as well? I think I saw a memo from Mark that there's something else out there, another project, I think it was Pond Road, something. Anybody? Beth, do you know?
Yeah, so there, I mean, there's like 500 projects, right? That we could probably prioritize money for. It's always a lot of projects, not enough money. But yeah, one of the projects we had discussed was, there's a wall within the right of way on Pond Street in front of a property that is in poor condition and we had talked about potentially, it needs to be replaced at some point. And certainly, we talked about, we've been talking about it for years and had considered potentially doing it this year. So yes, that's one of the, one of the other things that is money. If we don't use it for the decorative mast arms, it could potentially be used for. And just to Amy's point, not that I'm trying to sway you one direction or another, but the mast arms will be a little bit more obtrusive visually than what is out there with the temporary signal. That temporary signal is on a wire. And in this case, there'll be four metal posts hanging over the roadway in each direction, well, one in each direction. So visually, it's a little bit more imposing than what's out there, just for context, so you're aware, everybody's aware of that.
Beth, will the state install sidewalks as part of this project?
Yes, yeah, they're installing a new sidewalk along Ridge Street. And then also, because we're widening the road on Johnson Road, they're installing new sidewalks on Johnson Road.
And on, as far as Ridge Street, how far are they installing sidewalks? So I know that there's no sidewalks right now past, you know, if we go towards Woburn on Ridge Street, I guess it's north. There's no sidewalks past Buckman Drive?
Yeah, so their improvements stop at Vincent Circle. They're not going past Vincent Circle.
They're not going past Vincent Circle. Okay, so that's very little. So to me, that amount of money on Chapter 90 money, I mean, I think that, while we can all appreciate that the decorative lampposts would be much nicer, and I think it would be a lot harder for me to make this decision if it was in the town center when it's surrounded by other lampposts that are decorative and it matches them. I think that at that location, I would rather use the Chapter 90 money for additional sidewalks. I think a lot of the, there's a lot of kids that walk to VO from Ridge Street, you know, further north than Buckman, that right now have no sidewalks. So I can't, I can't see myself voting for spending close to $90,000 for decorative lamp, you know, light posts when we could use a lot of that money to pay for those sidewalks. Or, you know, it doesn't mean that those sidewalks need to be on the, first on the list right now, but there's a lot of sidewalks around town that need funding, as we know from the sidewalks that we just installed at Morocco. And I think that the $90,000 or whatever there is in the Chapter 90 could fund a lot of them.
Yeah, I'm certainly, you know, kind of sympathetic to both sides. I know that we, when I first came on the board in 2015, I was definitely opposed to kind of the decorative mast arms. But I, you know, have seen them since, and I've also seen the non-decorative ones and what they look like over a period of time. And the paint peels off quite a bit and it requires a lot of maintenance, you know, from DPW to paint those, and it really doesn't last that long. So I think for kind of, you know, high visibility and high traffic areas, which this certainly is one, for a project that, you know, we are getting a huge investment from the Safe Roots to School program, you know, that I, it would make sense to me to have that aesthetic element there and certainly continue on with our other projects down the list. And, you know, we've been looking at those sidewalks along. And, you know, we've, we've been looking at those sidewalks along Johnson and Ridge, particularly going up, you know, towards, towards Buckman. For a while, I know Jay had redone some, some of the sidewalks up there as well, so, but not past Buckman. That's, you know, something that we're looking at too. So that's, that's kind of really beyond the, the scope of what we've been looking at with this particular project. But, you know, it's, I, I, I feel like the aesthetic and just kind of longevity of these posts in general, it just seems like it, there's a, there's a benefit to it. But, you know, but it could be swayed either way.
Can I just clarify a question? Sorry, Susan. Is the paint on the decorative one different than the paint on the normal mast arm?
Yeah, so I can't speak, because these are mass DOT posts. But typically, the, the way the ones that, the decorative ones are factory painted. So I agree with Mike that they tend to be a little bit more durable. You can see the ones along Washington Street, which were put in, in the early two thousands, which are still in pretty good, very good shape, to be honest. And I, I do agree that the, the Mass DOT ones that you see, we don't have any in Winchester in particular, but we do see them around the greater Boston area, they do tend to peel after time.
Okay, thanks.
Do we know if there's a cost? What, what, what is the cost to like have to, you know, shut down and repaint or whatever it is that we need to do? If we were to get mass DOT ones?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question, unfortunately.
I, I think it's just really that what usually ends up happening is it just, is they're peeling. You know, it's not with all of the kind of backlog of our projects and the, you know, what DPW has with limited resources. It's just, you know, paint on all those mast arms and it just, it ends up just sitting there. So that, that, that's kind of why I had kind of changed my perspective over a period of time. Because, you know, until I got, you know, on the select board, it's not anything I really noticed before. So, so I, I do think that there is an appreciable aesthetic improvement, you know, with, with the ones in high visibility areas like we've seen around town. So that's, you know, my, my perspective.
So why don't I make a motion that we opt to stay with the standard mass DOT mast components for the intersection of Johnson and Ridge?
Second.
All in favor, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
No.
And no for me. The motion carries three to one. So we'll use the DOT standard mast arms there.
Great, thank you. I'll communicate that to Master.
Was there anything else that we need to do on that, Beth?
I think that's it for me.
Yep, and we don't, and, and while we're discussing the North Reservoir Dam later on, I don't think that we'll need you for that. So.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for hanging around.
Take care.
I see we don't need me either. I'm usually less important than Beth, so.
Well, we like having you around, but I, I, I suppose we've got to come up with something for you to, to stick around. But no, we, we should be set.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Mina, and I know Jillian bumped off, so thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, was there anything that was necessary for us to take out of order? I see Pete Lawson jumped on as well and.
Ruth is here, Pete's here.
Okay. Okay, so we can skip on the discussion of the mask zones for three and go to number four for the restructuring of the Climate Action Advisory Committee. So as many of you know, the Climate Action Plan was created over a period of a little more than a year. And our board certainly supported the fine work of the, the plan. And now it's onto the implementation stage. And it's how we make that happen and have volunteers working in the best way possible. So we've been having conversations with the Climate Action Advisory Committee. We had a meeting last week or the week before, I forget, Lisa, and with Lisa and with those members. And Ruth Trimarki is here, who has been kind of running the show for the Climate Action Team. So we have kind of set as a goal to kind of disband the existing committee and then have folks reapply to it. And so we could see who wants to be on the kind of overarching Climate Action Advisory Committee and then who wants to be on the kind of more implementation side for the working groups and subcommittees that are, are to be defined later. So I don't know, Ruth, you're welcome to weigh in. And Lisa, I don't know if there's anything else that you had on that one?
Just, let's see. I'm trying to share, share information without overwhelming folks right now, so.
Yeah, we, in the meeting, we had kind of, you know, agreed that this was the, the best way forward. There were a lot of people that invested a lot of time on the Climate Action Plan and, and a lot of people that have been, had a kind of a foot in both, you know, committees and over the years. So I think this is what exists there now. And has, you know, worked very well for us. And we're kind of just looking for a reapplication process. And also, you know, I've been talking with Ruth, and it's been an ongoing conversation about our application process for our committees, our appointed committees and working groups and being a little bit more intentional about those applications and asking people really the, kind of the, the why of what they want to do and not just submitting a resume. Because oftentimes, the resume shows kind of qualifications. But we found people that have that real personal investment stay longer on the committees and invest more. And oftentimes, they can jump to other committees as well if they're not, not so, so much connected to, to the committee that they're otherwise applying. So it's a good opportunity for us to, to hear a little bit more about the individual. So I think that that's where we're going as well.
Great, I'll just add that there was a significant amount of work that was done by some great volunteers to update the 2011 plan to the updated 2020 plan. There are some changes from the previous plan to this plan. Obviously, a lot of updated information, wonderful suggestions, a very ambitious sort of implementation plan. A lot more focus on resiliency. So it does make sense for us to, you know, to open it up and to see who might be interested in helping us, who might have the skill sets in the background that we need to implement the plan moving forward.
And we've also talked about how with this particular committee, and we're looking at others, that student involvement has been so successful and, and so necessary that that's going to be a component as well. And that's, you know, a voting member of the committee as well, so.
So Lisa, can I just ask, i- is the plan here, sorry, I use the word plan, is the goal here to recognize that we now have a new Climate Action Plan that we've accepted, the town has accepted, and that the idea, the goal tonight is to have a permanent Climate Action Advisory Committee? Is that the name of the, the new entity, the Climate Action Advisory Committee?
Yeah, it's the, the existing name really, and so we're creating some continuity there, except we're kind of blowing up the membership on the, the existing committee and then having people reapply to the new one. And we're going to be adding different working groups and different subcommittees as well. And, and that's really the, where the rubber hits the road and really the implementation work gets done. Because the, the Climate Action Plan was very detailed in how it endeavored to get these things done. And so that's, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, get some fresh faces in new positions, but still maintain some of the, the folks who have been working in the Climate Action Advisory Committee over the years and the original Climate Action Plan as well. So, you know, these, these things, when you do this much work over a short period of time, it's, it, it's a lot. And, you know, we don't want to burn our folks out and we want to cast a wider net and bring more people in, which was been really a successful part of the Climate Action Plan process too. We've been able to recruit a lot of new members. But if we're to pursue the implementation side, there's, there's a lot of, you know, people that we need to, to push it forward. So we're just trying to get the best folks in the right places. I don't know if that's, makes sense to you, Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the, the new charge would be to implement the new plan. I don't know if I necessarily want to use the word permanent. The last plan we had for nine years before we updated it, I, you know, the whole world is changing. So I don't want to make any commitments to how long this plan is going to be relevant for. But I can tell you, there's a lot in here to do, short term, medium term, and long term. So it's a big, a big charge for whoever does want to join this new committee.
Okay.
So two, or a few questions. One is, there, there's fourteen members, right? And we usually, and I know that the original one had twelve, but normally, we want to have an odd number. Because with fourteen members, the quorum would be eight. And we could achieve, you know, we could have an eight person quorum with fifteen, and that would give an extra person to be able to get a quorum.
I think, Mariano, to your, your point, we were actually looking at a, a nine-member committee, is that right, Lisa?
Yeah, so that's why I was hesitant responding, because the, I'm looking at the document and it says, it was, it was, it was, the fourteen members was for the Climate Action Committee, which is different than the, the Plan Implementation Committee.
So I think, yeah, we're looking, I think seven was where we landed on for new Climate Action Advisory Committee, so.
So we're talking about the advisory committee, but the, for some reason, the document in the packet talks about the other committee, the fourteen-member committee.
Yeah, so it was the Climate Action Task Force that had fourteen. And the Climate Action Advisory Committee were looking to kind of disband the old one and create the new one with a seven-person committee. And then after that, we're going to be creating several subcommittees and working groups, depending on. You know, one of the issues is always quorum and note-taking and things like that. So we're trying to make sure that we have the right people doing the work, but not making it too cumbersome on the logistical side. So I think we're, we're looking to disband the old Climate Action Advisory Committee and reform a seven-member Climate Action Advisory Committee. So there was some feeling that having it report to the select board and have some continuity there, but also have some continuity with the, with the name was, was helpful, even though it might be confusing in the immediate sense, because we had the, the task force, which did its job, which was create the Climate Action Plan. And now we're moving to the, the future, which is the kind of oversight of the Climate Action Advisory Committee and then the, the smaller groups.
Yeah, I have no issue with that. I just want to make sure that we have something in the packet or something that represents what we're voting for. Because what we have in the packet right now is for Climate Action Plan Committee, it has fourteen members.
Yeah, I saw, that, that actually, this is a document that I wrote. And this was to bring forward the people to create the plan versus the people that will then advise and implement the plan.
So I guess what we're asking now, and we can supplement this, you know, along the way, but is a disbanding of the existing Climate Action Advisory Committee and the forming of a new seven-member Climate Action Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second? Second?
How is the seven-member advisory committee going to be formed? Are there specific, are there, who is going to appoint? Are there appointees from specific boards? What are the terms? I guess that was my, that's my question, given that what's in the packet is not what we're voting on.
So right now, we are looking for people from a variety of backgrounds. The, the expectation is actually, this is a board, sorry, this is an advisory committee that people will apply to the town. So, yeah, is there, let me just see, do we have Ruth's document to share?
Yes, I have it. I can share it right now.
Okay, so this, this is a, this is a draft that, that we had put together. But it doesn't, it doesn't have the, the specific information that you're looking for, Mariano, about, about the terms and if anybody is going to be a representative of a particular board or committee. So certainly, that's something that we would, we could certainly welcome some input on. We don't necessarily have to be as prescriptive. We are hoping to have more robust working meetings. So there's sort of a seven-member group, but then there are some working subcommittees that we're going to put together and make sure that we pull in, pull in people. So we discussed student input and participation. We might not necessarily have a student as one of the seven members, but in terms of the various working committees to implement the plan, we hope to have robust student involvement in that way.
So we, we, we want, these were, these are appointed by the select board. So we didn't have like the climate, the climate task force that was working on the, the Climate Action Plan. Those, we wanted to have, you know, broad representation for specifically creating that plan, so we could hear from different areas, you know, Wright Lock Farm, et cetera. So, but the, these are select board appointments effectively.
Okay, so, okay, you, effectively or by law? I mean, are they, are we establishing a committee where all seven members are appointed by the select board?
Yes.
Okay, how long are the terms?
So, you know, we, we had a kind of a long conversation about this too, which is part of our, you know, ongoing board discussion. But we were thinking two-year terms for, you know, these positions. It's one year, seems like it's a little bit too short. Three years is something that's been hard, we feel. We've seen kind of people kind of drop off after that second year or so. So we would see these as, you know, two-year appointments.
And are we staggering, if it's two years, are we staggering them for? We're going to start with a one-year term or a two-year term? And three, we're going to start with a one-year term? That way, we don't have all seven renew on the same year?
Yes.
We can do that, yeah.
Right, okay. And our, the other question is, can we make sure that it's open to all residents and it's not registered? are the other question is, can we make sure that it's open to all residents and it's not registered voters?
Yes, we can do that.
This has the, I mean, the town clerk is going to need a document that specify all of these things, right? So that we can post the openings and do all the open meeting law and all of that, right?
Yeah, and you know, we're we're kind of just trying to move this forward as quickly as possible. So we, you know, we we will provide that that document with the kind of charge to the group in indicating what we are, you know, looking for and what the breakdown of those committees are. And we really just started having this conversation about the length of terms, alternating whether we do two, one, two, but it seems like the the two year terms are the kind of commitment that we need and the three year seems like it it could be you know, a little bit more trouble.
Yeah, we were also going into this meeting much more open to various forms for this committee. So I know in past meetings, we had trying to answer questions for the the Climate Action Committee. There was a discussion about whether this was more formal or more advisory. You know, some people had questions about, you know, whether things had to be posted and you know, how people were selected. So we did sort of go through a myriad of things and we didn't necessarily settle on one, you know, one particular scenario. I think we mostly talked about what they would be doing, the broad range of backgrounds, the definitives of student involvement and settling on, you know, multi year term with with seven members, but there was some thought that it could be as informal as the town manager is just going ahead and bringing some people together, implement the plan, or whether we wanted to be much more formal with, you know, applications and, you know, board appointments. So, I mean, part of this is really up to a lot of you who who haven't been in the number of discussions behind the scenes, just bring it forward to you for discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. And if, you know, if if this is like town manager, you know, Lisa, if you want to have, you know, if you want to bring people ad hoc when you need, you know, when you want an advisory team, I'm I'm open to that. If we want to establish a formal one, I'm open to that as well. I just want to make sure that I know what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Because I heard we're voting on disbanding the existing and creating a new one, but are we voting on creating a new one or just disbanding and then we'll figure out what the new one should be, right? That's I I'm absolutely in favor of of doing this. I think that addressing climate change is the number one thing that our generation has to do. I just want to make sure that we're doing it, that we that we know what we're voting on, that's all.
Yeah, and there was some discussion too about how a committee like this would normally have like a full time staff person staffing the committee. So that would be the sustainability director that we don't have yet. And in in the absence of the sustainability director, it's myself and a band of hardworking volunteers, which is why I think we we were thinking a small group of seven and then having a lot of the work done in these working groups, which is going to be hugely dependent on who can help step forward and with whatever particular expertise they have and who will, whatever help they can try to facilitate. And of course, we are actively working on a grant that's due in one week to get some funding for sustainability director.
So yeah, so just to kind of clarify where where we're at. So and, you know, there's been kind of a lot of work past, you know, week or so on this. So, you know, I apologize if it isn't fully fleshed out yet. There's going to be rules and regulations that are submitted by the group to the board for for us to to be aware of, but what we're doing is we're disbanding the existing Climate Action Advisory Committee. And so that's the the first effort that we're doing tonight. And this has all been discussed and approved by the the committee, so it won't be a surprise to anyone there. And then we are creating the new Climate Action Advisory Committee, which is a seven member committee appointed by the select board with two year terms. And that's you know, that that's where it's at now. Was I missing anything as part of that, Lisa?
No, I mean, I, you know, a lot of our committees are open to all residents, just like you said, Mariano, so there there isn't like a, you know, here's a a committee that you appoint where somebody has to necessarily come from a particular background or other board, unless you feel that that's that's necessary. So, I mean, you can look at the list of the fourteen participants in developing the plan and say, you know, do we do we feel like, I mean, those are the folks that will help reach out to, you know, once we actively advertise the positions, help find and recruit members, but I also know that continuously reaching out to volunteer groups for volunteers can, you know, can be can be hard and challenging at times.
So I'm I'm not sure what direction to go in this with this.
So we can do two motions or we can have them combined. So we can move to disband the existing Climate Action Advisory Committee and then a separate motion to create a new Climate Action Advisory Committee, which consists of seven members appointed by the select board with two year terms, open to all residents with the intent of having a student be one of those members.
So I get, Mr. Chair, this is parliamentary procedure, which is beyond, I'm not an expert at. And I think there was a motion and it was made and was seconded, but I guess we're going to like lay it on the table or?
Oh, sorry.
Definitely postpone it.
I was really clarifying because there was still questions. So there is there is that motion, right? So and that was that was seconded and I think that Mariano had some questions. So
Okay.
So are is, are we clear that that's what we're moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take a a roll call vote in support of that. And again, the motion on the table. So I'm forgetting actually.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I could amend the motion to add the specifics on the committee that this seven member committee would be appointed by the select board, that the members would have two year terms. And then the first year, three of them would have two year terms and four of them would have one year terms and it would work out to be staggered. There's a goal of having student involvement and that the members of the committee would be drawn from a wide range of backgrounds and open to all residents of the town.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. A definite enthusiastic yes.
Okay, all right. Mariano?
Yes, if I may, I would like to thank all of the people who have served all these years on the Climate Action Advisory Committee. They have put in a tremendous amount of work, the Climate Action Plan revision that they did is very important for our town. If I may draw one person out to name specifically, Ruth Trimarki has been instrumental in driving this forward for many, many years. And I I just think that this this town would not be what it is without the number of volunteers and Ruth is one person that stands out in that group. So thank you.
Thanks, Mariano. Amy?
Yes.
And Jackie, are you there? Are you still in the car wash?
No, 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 I was I was trying to like and my son was right next to me. Sorry about that. Um, yes, I'm a definite, yes. And I also would like to echo select board member Mariano Golebop's very generous and well deserved comments to Ms. Trimarki for all of her hard work as well as her dedication and her whole, you know, group of colleagues who also work so diligently on this important effort. So thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. So we'll have some more formal rules and regulations for the board after the first of September on that and we'll put together something to send out as well for the applications for the committee. And what's been amazing too is we still have so much interest in the committee from members of the that created the Climate Action Plan, but also from the original plan in 2011, we still have a lot of folks that are still committed to the work and we're looking forward to to the next step. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate working through that. So I see Pete is still on here, so I are we, so we will jump to number five and return to three later, but the update on the Town Hall HVAC and facilities analysis. Lisa, I think that that we we had done some kind of preliminary investigation of.
Yeah, so sorry about that. So Pete, if you can hear me, I thought I could unmute you unilaterally, but I can only press a button that says ask to unmute. So I think it's star six to unmute yourself.
There is.
I am unmuted.
Sorry about that.
Welcome, Pete.
Good evening. I'm sorry. I don't know why I could not get the Zoom to work tonight. I've never had the trouble I had with it tonight, so I had to call in.
So Pete, maybe do you want to give a little bit of, we'll we'll go way back and maybe talk about how you and I have been having discussions about the HVAC systems in various buildings and I charged you with finding or procuring a contractor to come on board and do a study. So maybe you can maybe talk a little bit about that process of how you brought the firm on board and then maybe go through some of their initial findings and some next steps.
Sure. So thank you. Yes, early on when COVID, it shut down the schools, shut down the buildings. As everybody knows, it was a scramble and we were following a lot of the lead from the governor, from CDC. And early on, Lisa got us going on the town buildings to have a review of the buildings. We since then have moved into the school buildings as well. We picked a firm that had been doing this for some other communities. There's a, there's a, sometimes there's a misconception about what we actually hired somebody to do. We are not looking at every piece of equipment to make sure it functions right or what things, you know, that it's doing what it's supposed to do. What we did was we we had an engineering firm come in, look at the type of systems we had, take a look at the plans and specifications for the equipment, verify the equipment, give us exchange rates that they were designed for, what they were capable of potentially, and give us recommendations to create more airflow. A lot of the, there's a lot of guidance out there that contradicts itself or is kind of a shotgun blast at what to worry about. There is the desire for as much exchange as possible, for as high a filtration as possible. These are sometimes rubber stamped into recommendations, but your system can only do what it can do. And you could potentially damage your systems if you restrict it with too high a filtration, change your pressurizing of the building by opening up to the outside air. Then you'll bypass some of your filtration as it is. So long story short is we're using the each building description with air exchange rates, CFM flow to maximize what we can for exchange in the buildings. We're taking that as the DPW with our in-house people and with contractors verifying that we have the exchange rates that that are described and then we're using the information to boost exchange rates to the maximum. There are also our simple guidelines where if we don't have certain extra or we have windows operable, we'll put into the daily cleaning plan for the custodian to come in and open windows in classroom two hours early. There's a lot of information that's good information for us to tweak the systems. A lot of what what the recommendation is, the high filtration, as I said, there's this rubber stamp out there of what's called a MERV thirteen filter that's extremely, extremely aggressive for filtration and would probably burn out a lot of our motors. And you can't even get them right now off the shelf because so many people are just buying them because that's what they're being described to do. We're going to be, we we've got higher filtration filters in there now that we started buying a couple of years ago. We used to years ago just buy a simple fiberglass median type of air filter. We had since moved up to what was called the MERV eight pleated filter. We are purchasing a lot of MERV elevens. We did try this in the fire department, upper area that has a constant air, constant volume unit that supplies VAB boxes. When we put that in, it very much cut down an already limited flow of air conditioning. So it it's a trial and error. Then we're going in using our volume testers to make sure we have the exchange rate. Fortunately, most of our buildings, if not everyone, except for the Mystic and the Parkers has a sophisticated EMS system on it. So most of what we can do, we can go right to the EMS, adjust outside air dampers and.
Yeah, so Pete, sorry, Pete.
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you. You're throwing out a lot of acronyms and I'm not quite sure if you've explained them. So like, you know, MERV, EMS, do you mind just, you know, make it a little?
Bring it down a bit. I'm sorry. So if there's any questions for that, but the long story short is that we're using this tool. We have the the report for the four major municipal buildings, the Town Hall, the Library, the Public Safety and the DPW. We've taken a lot of the actions and recommendations that are in that. We are working, I just in receipt of one of the drafts of the school buildings, we'll be putting forward our the work on those all along through the summer. We have been making sure that everything is operational. We've already cleaned and changed all the filters and all of the units. And when these MERV elevens, which is just a rating, I I couldn't exactly give you what MERV stands for, but it's a it's a rating for for the ventilation, the the thickness of the filter. And EMS is our building management system. We have a sophisticated control of all of the HVAC in the buildings. We can sit remotely, look at a graphic scheme, see what's happening in each individual piece of equipment, how far open the dampers strokes, meaning how much outside air is or is not coming in. We can regulate that. We can set time schedules on everything. So there's items like turning fans on two hours early before occupation or some might recommend twenty fourths hours a day on bathroom fans. So those are all adjustments that were taken from these 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 reports as they come.
Any?
Am I still there?
Yep, any questions for Pete? For me?
So I have a question and, you know, I'm I'm not an expert either and that, thank you for explaining that in detail and also kind of stepping back and and in lay layperson's terms. Am I correct in saying that you've had an engineering firm come in, a special, a firm that specializes in HVAC and look at all the equipment in each of these buildings and make some recommendations about how to? about how to maybe the word is optimize the operation of the systems so they can get the maximum amount of fresh air and ventilation with you know without harming the system itself that you you really want to have worked on optimizing these HVAC systems and all these various buildings so that you can have filtration and fresh air to the extent that the you know these these to really get these systems working to do that
Exactly
Okay thank you
And a lot of the recommendations are sort of very general and then some are very specific so like there's some recommendations that are just you know like total common sense like if you can open up a window open up and others are just you know some more specificity about you know what the exact you know should be or minimum rating should be on filters how often you should clean them some operational things many of which we're already doing so they didn't like review the operations of DPW they just reviewed our equipment and just sort of give us the sort of recommended operations
But but they did do it on a building by building basis
So Pete I don't is there any any difference between the scope or extent of what they're looking at for the schools versus the for municipal buildings
No there's it's truly the same same that the out of all of the buildings we have the one that's most different about air delivery is the town hall because the town hall was never designed to have outside air mechanically delivered to the spaces so when you talk to the engineer what system is the best you know in layman's terms what's the best one when you're dealing with the concern of the covid spread they'll just say they all have their particulars that as I said the town hall you have operable windows to the outside in every room you get fresh air you're not exchanging air between spaces and you're filtering air so that's good for town hall something like the Morocco School which was a brand new high efficiency unit put in in 2010 which is pretty close to the identical to the system we have at Vincent Owen that has the capacity to take a lot of outside air and exchange rate very high but it does exchange mixed air in the return air system which it can take a higher filtration so each one of them has its has its particulars that you know we're looking at
Thank you for all your professionalism with that I'll just add this is Jacque Welch
Oh no we're all we're all doing our best to make everybody safe I appreciate your you folks concerns
I also want to say that this staff has really done a bang up job helping to procure items to get buildings and schools ready a lot of it will thankfully come in before students are slated to return to school and that's not the case everywhere else so it's always been a team effort to figure out what needs to happen and then get the resources meeting so everyone will be very busy over the next few weeks
Everyone's been very busy for the last five months too
Any other questions for Pete or Lisa so we're gonna be looking at some more information in the coming weeks from the town side and the school side
I just wanted to add as we're often praising town hall under the leadership of our town manager for all their hard work with respect to the pandemic this is just another example of how professional and caring as well as just how you know timely and hardworking everybody seems to have been so very much appreciate it week after week after week very impressive
Thank you
Thanks and I know how in demand you are Pete so I don't want to keep you on too long certainly if there are other questions you know that the board has you know we can kind of move things through Lisa but I know you're you've been working 24/7 so hopefully you can we can get you out of here unless there are other questions
Can I mention something going back I want to thank you Mr. Betancourt I grew up on the corner of Johnson and Ridge Street all my life and had many of injured people in my kitchen with my mother being a nurse fixing them up from that corner I always grew up wondering why they didn't put a light there appreciate that
Yeah right and you see how long it took right it's yeah not easy so should be good Thanks Pete we appreciate all your efforts and work for your team and we'll we'll talk to you soon
Good night
Good night So we can go back now to item three on our agenda and unless we're really need to I'd like us to be done by 9:30 so just to give everybody heads up so we I think we're getting there but that's the target so number business item three is mask zones and a discussion for us whether to create some requirements of mask wearing mostly in the center business district so we've had several requests from residents we were on a call with the reopening committee earlier this week many members from the chamber and anecdotally they were saying they're having a really difficult time with people wearing masks and you know it's a difficult situation for them to be in if they are the ones that have to give a mask to someone or have to have you know somewhat of a confrontation with someone by to say hey you can't come in this door without a mask and you know you you hope that everybody is wearing them but you know Winchester is unlike some other towns where our sidewalks are very narrow as well and it's very difficult to social distance but there's definitely been a deficiency with mask wearing just anecdotally and there's been a lot of concerns that have been raised especially from some of our older residents who feel uncomfortable about going into the town center so and I know Lisa you had reached out to Jen Murphy as well
Yeah so I'll just say in general that this is it's very difficult when there isn't sort of a uniform policy across all you know 351 cities and towns so like every town is doing it differently and sometimes two towns are next door to each other and they have vastly different ordinances requirements and so on but also there are also very different case counts even though we know that those obviously are not restricted to geographic area or town boundaries so there's a couple of things that Amy Mike and myself talked about with the reopening committee related to this like mask zone which is kind of a simplified way to say we need to figure out how to continue to encourage and motivate people to wear masks in town so the recommendations I think in Winchester are not as severe as other communities that might be harder hit we're not looking to create a ordinance which comes with big fines like 300 $500 I think there was a couple of different examples I shared with the reopening committee Amherst Mass was kind of the least I would say I don't know what the word is forceful in that for example it had sort of a gradated it did have a fine but it had a gradient find out $50 for the first one a hundred dollars versus you know going to 300 if we did want to look at an ordinance if we didn't want to look at an ordinance then we could do is we could just go forward and do kind of a marketing sign campaign so we can still create a mask zone in terms of you know not having one that comes with an ordinance or fines but just one where we do put up signs and request that people wear wear masks some communities their mask zones are requiring that businesses enforce when people go into stores and other mask zones are that people have to wear masks even when they're outside so they're they're not even defined the same way from from town to town in the packet we did include some examples of signage one is a one from Newport port that like has a map of where the zone and it says that you have to wear a mask the others are from from the cave that were provided by a business person in town as part of the reopening committee so those are just examples so we could just be a signage mask ambassador marketing campaign that we can have in full swing before the rush of people coming back to school back downtown especially if there's you know a lot of kids that are coming you know going to school for a few days and then they might be coming downtown afterwards or or on the remote days people are coming back from vacation so there's a lot of considerations for the board right now is do you want to see an ordinance if so there's gradations of that do you want to focus on just the signage and a positive campaign
Any thoughts or comments
So I mean I think you know we can do signage and positive campaign first regardless of whether we we decide to do a an ordinance of some sort so I think we should do that as far as something that has a fine a bylaw would require a time meeting which that's not until November but I think either so the Board of Health has authority and the select board also has authority either one can impose $300 up to a $300 fine on whatever either of the boards decide so if we're going to do something that has some teeth I would go I think we should go that route either board
So the Board of Health hasn't met officially on this topic but the Board of Health Director did call each board member individually to talk to them about their feelings about this and I think two two would be in favor of something like an emergency order and one was more in favor of an education campaign so it's not it's not uniform and I just shared with you the Amherst Board of Health emergency order for a particular part of town
So to me this is sort of like the or analogous to the order that was in place about showing real estate the private you know house showings this is certainly within the scope of the Board of Health and we could you know that this board could you know back them up and it would be a joint action it doesn't need to be something with a fine it seems to me it's more like this is the responsible way to behave that in the town center where it's you're in order to stay on a sidewalk and pass somebody you're going to be unable to socially distance so let's just all be realistic and responsible and wear masks for the kind of town where everybody shovels the snow off the sidewalks to help people get around without falling so this is just kind of the same thing and I think it would also take some of the pressure off the shop owners and everyone being the you know feeling like they're the ones who have to enforce or remind that you know if we gave them something that they could refer to and say well look this is just this is the rule and this is the responsible thing to do so would you please you know put the put your mask on or could you please lift your mask up and be sure it's covering your nose I was in out on vacation in another part of the state and you know I heard the lady running the bookstore repeatedly ask people can you can you put your mask on you know and you know it was just sort of second nature to her to do that but I like felt bad that she had to keep reminding people so I would just kind of love to have something in place that would make this the new just the culture of being responsible and caring for each other
Yeah I mean I think Susan I agree I think that I mean I have strong feelings about this but I think that I'm very much against an order or an executive order of any type on this I think we have the state that we can go back to and they have there's a mask order in the state of Massachusetts that I think you know we can certainly point to and educate people about and I think that the story about you know this is about public health it's not about your you know your health necessarily but it's about other people's health and that's like you said Susan that's the community that we are we look out for each other and that means wearing a mask when you're around other people but I don't think that there's I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of doing anything that certainly that has a fine associated with it I think for the store owners I think you know that is up to them to unfortunately they have to make the decision for their store whether or not they let someone in you know it's it's obviously you don't want to have any confrontations with customers but we have a state they can blame it on the state to say that this is the rule if you're indoors you need to wear a mask and you know we could maybe support them and work with the chamber to talk about what type of signage we can have up in town and maybe there is a no shirt no shoes no mask no service type of thing that we can help them educate people about if that's what their choice is but that's where I would want to see it and I wouldn't want to move forward with any type of order or fine I just don't think we have the data to push that right now in terms of cases and I know that there's going to be you know quote unquote influx of people coming back from out of town but I just think we need to be careful
I agree with Amy and with Ms Shapiro and also I do think some of those examples of signage you know are nicely done but still get people's attention and call me a naive but I think I think most people respect the idea of wearing masks and and maybe I am naive but it seems like maybe you know if they inadvertently you know don't put it over their nose or you know I think most people want to do the right thing I guess you know again maybe I'm naive but anyway so I think going the approach that Ms Shapiro was outlining and then maybe thinking about some signage seems appropriate and then we kind of reassess especially given the state order thank you
I guess just anecdotally I think everyone at this point is very aware that a pandemic is going on I see not a lot of mask wearing going on in the town center and that's what's been shared from our businesses as well and you know we're telling everyone to go out go down there and shop and you know eat at restaurants and creating an additional layer of you know conflict for that with them is not helpful I mean the I will say the easiest thing I've had to do in the last six months is walk out of the house and stick a mask in my pocket and when I walk in somewhere just put it on my face you know it's light lifting I think on the the education pieces is super important and necessary and we have to do that and we all agree there and on the enforcement side if we do have something with a fine it's it's what it looks like we're not going to have the National Guard coming in to stand at the end of Thompson Street you know policing it but we are going to be talking to people and you know engaging them in conversations if it seems like they are really negligent in the mask wearing because I do see a lot of kids not wearing masks and there's this you know idea with kids that they're invincible and they don't have to do it and they're healthy but a lot of the seniors that want to be out of their house and come down and sit on a bench and be engaged in the community find it very troubling that there isn't a lot of mask wearing and so you know it's not a lot of fun but it seems like it's you know we we give people tickets for parking you know and I think that this is the stakes are a lot higher with this so and I get a lot of tickets for parking frankly so
Yeah I mean I think we have a what a $50 fine in the bylaws for disorderly conduct and I think that not wearing a mask has such a negative effect on our businesses on the town center because people are afraid to go there that you know I mean maybe $300 is too much because people are afraid to go there that, you know, I mean, maybe $300 is too much, but I think, you know, a $50 fine. And, you know, I think our, our police is, is judicious enough that if they ask somebody to put on a mask and they do, or to cover their nose and they do, they're not going to immediately give them a fine. But I think that having that order from us in order to, you know, be able to use that when somebody resists and, you know, something equivalent to disorderly conduct, I think makes sense.
Yeah. I just, I, I mean, I just, I've been downtown a lot. I don't see what you see, Mike. And I, you know, we obviously aren't there at the same times. I don't see a blatant disregard for wearing masks in the downtown center. I know that the, the, some of the retailers have had some trouble with it. And I, you know, I know that a lot of the people that they are concerned of or what they were speaking about are the, are the young people downtown. And that is, I think, where an education campaign can come in much more effectively than a fine. You know, and obviously that's the parents too that need to, to support that. But I, I just, I don't know. It's a slippery slope. I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. I think, you know, we clearly, people need to understand. And I, if they don't understand now what the importance of wearing a mask, I don't know that we're going to change it. And I just think that this is just going to create a lot of ill will. And I don't know, I'm just, I'm concerned about it. I just don't think it's the right direction to go in right now.
I agree with Ms. Shapiro and I'm sorry, Susan, I'll just sort of say that, you know, if we can just keep relooking at it. I, I don't get the sense that the data has gone so crazy in the last few weeks. You know, but, but the signage, anyway, I won't be repetitive, but I agree with Ms. Shapiro. Thank you.
I was just going to say, in the interest of time, we all seem to think that some signage and an, and an education campaign downtown, marketing campaign downtown would make sense. I like a, a couple of the examples of the very simple signs. So that's, I think it'd be fine if we just move ahead with the education campaign. Do you, you need a vote for that or is? So I move that we authorize the town manager to work with the chamber on an education campaign and signage to encourage mask wearing in the town center.
And friendly amendments, it's also the, the Health Department.
And the Health, to work with the Health Department, yes.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
So Susan, was it, you're, you're feeling that you didn't want to move forward with any action on the other item?
You mean the order and the downtown, the zone? Well, may, maybe. Yeah, I was gonna, let's wait on that. Maybe at least it can come back with more of a specific proposal. Maybe if the people on the Board of Health have more specific ideas, come back with maybe a, where the, where the line would be around the town center and, and what reasonable fine might be or just some more specifics around that.
Do you mind if I maybe speak to the public health piece really quickly? So in the last month, so a month ago, we had 121 cases. Zero were active and we had seven deaths. We did have one more death, a woman in her late eighties attributed to COVID-19. So there are eight deaths total. 128 cases as of today, zero active. So we haven't had much active cases over the last month. But we also heard from, you know, downtown business person that we haven't been tested yet in terms of reopening. That, you know, it could happen this fall. So I think we'll, we'll do our best with the robust education campaign. We'll keep an eye on the numbers and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Thanks Lisa. So we'll just continue down the agenda. The number six is the planning board vacancies. So we've already mentioned that Betsy Craigers resigned and retired from the planning board. So that leaves her position open until the next election at the end of March. And so there'll be a joint appointment that we will notice in post, starting tomorrow, I believe. And then we'll, we'll schedule a joint meeting and discuss that appointment with the planning board. So are there any questions about that? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the update on the financial plan.
Yep. Um, I mean, Mike, do you want me to start with your request to me?
Yeah, sure. Yep.
So in talking with the Select Board Chair, it made sense to get a head start on both the planning process for next year's budget, but also look at long-term scenarios. So putting together a multi-year plan and trying to figure out, for example, how, how many years the existing override can last us, but also trying to anticipate both anticipated and potentially unanticipated costs associated with operational capital or other needs. There are a couple of big things coming down the pipeline, of course, including a, a new school. So we want to create as much certainty as possible. So where we are at this point in time is I'm reconciling multiple spreadsheets. I think this was something that we came across with the last State of the Town, which is there was, you know, a million iterations of the long-term financial plan. So my officer right now is, is, is sort of looking at what everybody has out there and will create a master spreadsheet and start incorporating a lot, a lot of the projections. So we're looking at what the Capital Planning Committee is looking at right now in terms of what they're going to prioritize so that we can figure out what they're not able to fund. And if those things may become issues or need to be funded in, in the plan. We're looking at the impact of the next round of union contracts because we're in the middle right now with three-year contract. But if we're looking at long-term planning, we've got another round of contracts that we need to consider. We have a number of expenses when it comes to certain capital projects. We have a waste disposal contract that is expiring. So we're, we're trying to see if we can get extended, but I think we all know that waste disposal costs have skyrocketed. So we're kind of going down the list right now, department by department. And we're also looking at potentially some new requests. So for example, you know, even if we get a grant to hire a sustainability director, it is a one-year grant. And we have to kind of commit to sustaining that in future years. There's also, you know, some requests for funding for a master plan. We have a new cultural district. So there are some requests that they have as well. So I'm just compiling it all right now. Not making any statements about whether certain things should be funded or not. I think that's the work that we'll do together is, is start prioritizing things. Once we have everything sort of compiled in terms of its, what it is, the cost, when we potentially think that those costs will hit and we'll start looking at that soon.
Thanks Lisa. Yeah. So we're just starting to get on track of the budget process. And, you know, we've identified a lot of major capital and operating needs. And so we're just need to figure out and with, you know, looking at the funding of the Lynch Project and Project 10 on the flood mitigation side, a lot of questions are coming our way of how, how are we going to get all of this stuff done when it's all necessary? And still means us being creative about funding. So hopefully we can start moving forward through that, that process. Are there any questions or anything on that right now? So we'll continue to work on that and update everyone on the process and go from there. We'll move to item eight on the business agenda, the update on the North Reservoir Dam. So I think we've talked about this a little bit, but there is some risks has been identified by the state with, with some seepage from the, the dam and potential of it breaking at some point. The risk seems to be increasing. So they are requiring us to do repairs to it. It was built in 1870. Is that right, Lisa? I, I think around that time.
I would say.
Eighteen, I thought it was 1875 in Beth's slides.
It was, okay. So.
A long time ago.
A long, so as far as.
So it should last another five years, right?
Right. Right. So, yeah. So we just cross our fingers. It's just, it's over by Susan anyway. So we'll be all right.
Yeah, it'll just wash out the veil. That's all.
Oh yeah, there you go.
Am I, am I showing it? 1875. And then here's a picture circa 1920. So this is something compiled by Weston and Sampson. See. So they're going to present to the Capital Planning Commission, the current budget request is for $6 million to $50,000. We're working a warrant article for borrowing authorization for the fall town meeting. And if it's approved, it will be bid sometime after the first of the year.
Oh yeah, there's the picture.
So is, is the idea to service the bond from Capital Stabilization Fund?
I think actually Mark Too Good has been talking about it being a Chapter 110 project. Meaning it would be, at least in part, part of the water, water and sewer enterprise fund. I mean, this, this dam has been, it's, it's, I remember hearing about it and learning about it slowly over a period of years. So it's been something that we, the town has been kind of keeping an eye on and thinking, oh, it's going to come up. Are we really going to have to do some, a substantial project on this dam one of these days? But we're just kind of keeping an eye on it and we have kept, the town has kept an eye on it for a long time. And that, that period is over and it really is time to do the project and reinforce it and, you know, implement some more modern engineering design approaches. You know, the good news is, yes, it has lasted a good long time. And it should last another hundred years or so with the right upgrades and the right modernization and shoring it up the right way. So, I mean, it's, it's beautiful. You can go stand, it's up right at the end of Appalachian Road by Hillcrest. And it's, you know, part of this, the reservoir system that we get some of our drinking water from. So it's, it's a wonderful town amenity and asset. And we, we should really get behind this. It's time to do it.
We don't have a choice. I mean, so it's, and that's what we, you know, we've been kind of sharing with the Capital Planning Committee who is typically, you know, ranking all these projects and everything. And, you know, it's, we, this is what happens when you have aging infrastructure and of, you know, bridges and dams. And it happened with us with the Lake Street Bridge. You know, we, you know, kick the tires every few years and it looks like it's okay. And then out of the blue, all of a sudden it fails and we got to do it. So that's, that's where we are here. But I, I have heard Chapter 110 is the identified funding source for it as well. So, you know, but, you know, that, you know, that comes with complexities as well, but I think that would be the goal.
Sorry, Mike, but Mike, you had reached out to our state delegation. I didn't see if they had responded at all about if we could scour state resources for funding.
Yeah. Mike was looking into it and, and he's going to get back to me on it. But, you know, he was looking to, to do a mass works grant. I know that we had talked about that in the past. It's, it's a little bit of a stretch, just conceptually. But I think that was what he was inclined to move forward. But that, I don't know. It's, it's a harder time right now, I think, for him to identify some of those sources. But, you know, I said to him, anything to offset that large number that kind of surprised us would be helpful. So he's looking into that. And, and so is Senator Lewis.
Just to be clear, I wasn't questioning the, the project itself. I think it's very much worthwhile. And, and I, I hope that whatever we build today can last 150 years or, I'm not doing the math correctly, I'm sure. I, I just wanted to identify what the source of funding was going to be. The nice thing about Chapter 110 is that we just had $270,000 fall off of actual debt, principal and interest payments fall off for something that we finished paying off. The 1999 Series A water mains and water mains too. So if there's a little, there's a little bit of space.
I did not know that. That's good.
Questions? Back to my agenda. Okay. So we'll move on to item nine then, if we're okay with the North Reservoir Dam. So we've got two appointments, one to the Town Forest Committee and one to the Board of Appeals. Typically, you know, we have a new applicant come before us. But, you know, it's a little bit difficult in these remote meetings. So I guess we would appoint if possible is what I recommend. And maybe schedule Stephanie to come in at some point.
She was invited to the meeting.
Yeah. It's, it's difficult for people to come in. So maybe we can remind her of our next meeting if she wants to come back in and just put forward kind of a, a conditional appointment. And Mark Waterbury has been on the Board of Appeals and doing great work there. So we don't need him to come before us as he did last appointment. But we have these, these two appointments to get, to, to move forward tonight if the board would like to.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Stephanie's, I'm not sure how to pronounce her name, Squenya, to the Town Forest Committee for a new term to expire on March 31st, 2023. We, she did volunteer and expressed interest and that's, you know, I think someone who wants to volunteer and be on a specific committee should be given the opportunity. So I, I, I move that we appoint her.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
And I move that we appoint incumbent Mark Waterbury to a permanent position on the zoning board of appeals to, for a new term to expire on March 31st, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Sorry. Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. So we'll move on to the consent agenda and I think. And I think that we can take that as a whole. I know that, Susan, you had some changes.
I, I have my questions answered and I'm all set.
You're all set, okay.
I have a quick question on this Solomore and Revelle. The email said they wanted to set up in front of the alley, in front of Fuller's Cut. But the application is for the corner of Thompson and Main. Could we, we're approving.
Yes, that was the final decision that Jen had worked out with them to do it. And where the benches are in front of the real estate store.
Okay, that's fine. As long as they agree, as long as they, that's all set, then I'm, I'm good with the whole thing.
Yes.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy? Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. And I think, Lisa, I don't know if there was anything else, but I think that's all we have on the agenda for tonight.
Uh, yes, that is it.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for the meeting tonight and we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.